I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is August 27th, 22nd, 2016. Can I have a roll call, please?
Aaron, here. Caprowski?
Here.
Waylon?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Basil?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Give the minutes of the August 8 meeting. Any changes, questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion, there is a second. Any questions in the motion? Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Waylon?
Assistant.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes. The tax income we received since July 25th is $172,116.47. We've got our poll tabs and jar game money from last year, which was $4,585.01. And we're getting real estate taxes in again. I wanted to let everybody know the municipal elections are coming up next year on April 4th. The village president and three trustees will be up for elections. The first day petitions can start being circulated is on September 20th. And the filing dates for those petitions are December 12th through the 19th. All information available, anyone interested in running beginning September 20th. Candidates can go to the state board of elections website. There's a candidate's guide that's already posted on there. We held a, my Will Grundy clerk group met with the Will County Clerk recently and discussed the upcoming elections. And one of the things she's pushing this year is voting by mail for all upcoming elections. To try and cut down on lines and confusion and all the early voting sites. Like the township has the early voting and they've had really long lines and it taxes their staff quite a bit. And even on the polling places, there can be long lines. Because now you can actually register to vote at the polling place on election day, which caused new lines. And they need more election judges for that. So the county clerk's encouraging doing it by mail. And I attached the form so you guys can look at it. So, you know, they're encouraging your whole household to just vote by mail. It just has to be postmarked by the day of the election to be counted. And that's where all those provisional, you know, votes come in. I think this election will be even harder to gauge because of this. Because a lot of people are going to be encouraged to vote this way. So it's going to be two weeks after the election that we're going to get any kind of solid numbers because of that this time.
Anyone from the audience wish to address the board? If not, finance and administration, trustee Meyer.
Consider resolution authorizing line item transfers in the budget to cover the cost of the new Public Works employee contract. The resolution distributes the funds we set aside for the settlement for various line items in the budget to cover the cost of the new agreement for the fiscal year. The total cost of the new contract for this fiscal year is $22,054. However, all wages were frozen until the CDA was approved. So most of this amount would have been budgeted anyway. Staff recommends approval. Do you have anything else to add though? Okay, good. I would like to make a motion for resolution number...
2016-07.
2016-07, authorizing line item transfers in the budget to cover the cost of the Public Works employee contract.
Motion out of court, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions in the motion? Roll call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Water back and Amen has completed all field work for the audit. And they're assembling the audit, which will be presented at the first meeting in October. As soon as the audit work is complete, we'll begin the five-year planning process. And the first draft will be presented in December. The Illinois Public Benefit Cooperative, the village currently has $116,000 surplus in the account for health insurance. At this time, only $15,000 of this is unrestricted. But after the next audit of the pool, we expect this to increase to about $65,000. There is a table attached that everyone had as part of their packet. And the Illinois Municipal Insurance Cooperative, despite our $31,000 claim for flood damage to the police station, this pool is in decent shape with $518,000 in reserves, which we will use to hedge rates in the future. The issue we have is workers' comp insurance, which eats into any of the savings we have on the liability side. There are still three lingering claims on the books. And until they're closed, the set aside is huge. And there is a table for that also. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public buildings and properties part of some recreation program.
Yes, the playground equipment that we've been talking about over the last month or so that Mr. Perry was trying to secure for us kind of fell by the wayside. So we're not going to proceed with that. There's been situating as far as time and money and everything else as far as relocating. I think it'd be best just to leave it be at this point, so.
Apparently there was also additional vandalism by people.
Was there? That ends my report.
Why are you building a zone, trustee Aaron?
The village department monthly report was enclosed for your review. And our August 25th meeting, the PCC, has been canceled due to a lack of attend items. And we are going to be changing our next regular scheduled PCC meeting. It's going to be pushed back by one week to the 5th Thursday, which will be September 29th unless, of course, the meeting is canceled.
All indications are that meeting will happen.
It will happen.
Yeah. I'm expecting to get a special response.
Okay. And that's my report.
And we probably say to trustee Coleman.
Police and code enforcement reports are included in the package. Mosquito abatement update, Buddy, you want to talk to us about that?
Everything's going fine. We'll be continuing until the weather changes. Playing on Thursday nights.
There's been some concerns, but about these retention ponds we have that might contain larvae. Do you want to explain to the board why those retention ponds are probably mosquito free?
Well, number one, they're aerated. And you have more of a problem with like bottle caps or tires or something like that. Where the water is still and it's saying, you know, I have a constant light upon it to where they can breed up to 10,000 mosquitoes.
But don't, don't the briquettes from our sewers end up in the pond?
Yes, they do. Yes. And our retention ponds. Yes, our ponds are treated. Everything that we throw in the catch basins, it's a larvicide. And what it does is dwarf the mosquitoes to prevent them from becoming the female mosquito, which does all the biting. The private ponds, that we don't have anything, you know, that would probably be a couple golf course ponds. And I see that they, you know, most of those are aerated, so that's a positive thing.
And the white bottom ponds are all stocked with fish?
Yes.
So the fish are beating the larvae?
Correct.
That's all I know.
Future code enforcement program, the committee met prior to the board meeting to consider a contractual service providing the enforcement program in conjunction with village staff. At this meeting, another option has come to the table. And we're going to pursue that before we go any further with this program. So there'll be news coming up from here on. Search for emergency service agency EMA director. The committee met prior to the board meeting to consider a job description and a small annual salary for the position of EMA. Director to help find volunteers to begin a full EMA program. An update will be provided.
That also would be tabled with the new information that you came up with, Senator?
Any questions of the chief or myself? Not that from the chief or board.
Public Works committee, trustee Ford.
Water department monthly reports are enclosed for your review along with sewer department monthly reports. Committee approved weekly brush pickup program. We had at our last committee meeting, you know, Buddy was there and Matt. They actually approached us about this. It was their idea. They came to us with, you know, with facts. You know, they didn't just come and shoot from the hip. They came to us, they said they had tried it for a month. They were doing it weekly. And it cut down on the time that it took to do the brush pickup. But doing it weekly rather than waiting and doing it bi-weekly. They said it was easier for them. It was more efficient. So, I mean, why would we just say anything different? So I think it's a good service for the residents. I think a lot of residents will be happy about that, not having to wait every other week that it'll be done every Monday. So we'll see how it goes. So brush pickup will now be every Monday between April 1st and December 1st, village-wide. Chestnut and Willow Street light update. The committee met and recommended the enclosed letter be sent out to residents of that neighborhood to gauge, see what their level of support is, one way or the other on these. It's kind of a pilot program. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read the letter, if they thought it was good or not. But we got an idea when we were thinking of sending those out.
They're out and we're getting some back. But I don't want to contaminate the results by saying what the current number is. But we do know surveys are coming.
Good, so they are coming back though. Good, good. Okay, sidewalk replacement update. We also discussed that at the last committee meeting. Right, it looks like Buddy, you want to fill us in more on that? We're going to do some mudjacking.
We're going to do, there is going to be total sidewalk replacement. But the more that we investigated in the last two years with all the newer subdivisions, we, because of the weather, a lot of the single sections of sidewalk has sunken over the water service lines and sanitary service lines. The cheapest way to bring these back up to workable conditions that we have been able to come up with is doing a process called mudjacking. And I believe we can get all of our new subdivisions back up into a workable status. And then we will work diligently on the older part of town. But we also will be doing some, some of them will have to be replaced because of stress fractures. But it's, I'm really kind of excited about it. It's a good headache and we're going in the right direction.
Now, you've seen three proposals for mudjacking.
Yes.
So this part of the program's going to cost about $5,000.
Right, $4,900.
That's an excellent number to get all those new subdivisions back up to 100%.
And if I count it, it was approximately just under 100 squares and you count in 97 squares of concrete.
Yeah, there was a difference, you know, the biggest problem that we, I want to say that we came up with was the type of material that we were going to be using for mudjacking. They use a polyurethane, which is a chemical routed. I'm not real sure how well that works. I know it works well with larger foundations. But with what we're doing at, the longevity, you get a two-year warranty out of it. If it drops, we'll call them up, get them to come back in. I think we get more bang for our buck. Plus the way that the corners have sunk also, we were throwing in those in Prairie Crossing, Prairie Crossing South, Hunter's Chase, and Antucket Cove, so.
So you're recommending the limestone injection out of the concrete?
Right, it's a limestone clay slurry mix that they, with pool sand. And it's a flowable fill. And then what they do is they core into, like maybe put three holes into the concrete. Then they have a, they mix it, they have a probably like a hydro pneumatic pump. And it literally levels it up and pushes it up. And the way that we're doing it with the company that we chose, instead of just using a single square sidewalk, they will gradually do like three or four of them to bring them all up to grade.
Yeah, most of these, they're recommending that you raise two or three. So it's a gradual thing, you don't just get one that's dropped and then just jack it to meet each one. They'll gradually do it throughout the, you know, each side of it.
I will say this, we were looking, the biggest problem we have would have in the older part of town where that sidewalk is messed up. Because a lot of the sidewalk in the older part of town is maybe two inches thick. And I don't think hydraulically the stress, it could take the stress, it would probably snap in there too. So we're going to be looking at, I mean, there are some sections over there that we will do that has been put in. But most of that's going to have to be physically removed.
Now, you also get into tree roots.
Correct.
I mean, as far as heaving the...
Right.
Are they able to, what are you going to do? Are you going to remove those?
Well, some of those will, eventually Scott, those trees are going to have to come down and the roots will be up. Those will have to be a full replacement. There's nothing you can do about it. We start ripping into tree roots, the trees are going to die. So we're trying to do the best we can to hold off and not create another problem.
And in some of those, we've actually used asphalt.
Right.
To go on a tree.
We've been creative about it.
Get the slabs out of there because the trip hazard is several inches. The US that's in the packet, it's just concrete, is that the mudjacking? Or is that actually concrete going to be replaced?
I have to look and see which one it is. I give Jonathan...
Well, that is the mudjacking.
This is a mudjacking.
Well, hollow, search chutes and weed beds.
All the new... Yes.
That's mudjacking? So Matt, you got some, you got some mudjacking in the old part of town too?
No, these are squares that have to be removed.
These are the, you need to do something.
Oh, yes, these are, yes, these have to physically be removed.
No, these are some.
Jonathan has the ones that are all mudjacked.
Okay, I'm trying to, okay. So Ron, to answer your question, it could be one or the other. He had a resident ask him about Melrose, if he's getting the sidewalk replaced or, and I said, well, I'm not sure if it's mudjacking.
Looks like on this proposal, there was one that Buddy recommended. It's 617 Melrose, it's raising level three squares. And it's 656 Melrose, raising level two squares. 533 Melrose, raising level four. 518, raising level five. 515, raising level two.
So there's quite a bit of work on Melrose with mudjacking?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then may I ask any question?
And one other thing with the concrete, we still, I'm waiting for two other bids from, for the people that are going, for the guys that are going to physically be pulling out the concrete, pouring all new concrete, framing. And I would imagine we would be doing the restoration in-house.
All right, ash tree removal update. Public Works has identified approximately 50 trees that need immediate action or removal. These trees have all been tagged with a special metal token so we can track the progress of these. We had 14 of those that need to be removed by licensed contractor. And 34 of those will be done in-house, approximately. Cool, they have these trees down by May 1st, 2017. Lists are enclosed for your review.
Yeah, we're in the process of getting proposals for the contractual removal. We did receive one and it was very surprising how cost-effective that option is. And we'll review that with the committee once we get all our proposals.
Parkway tree planting is scheduled for November. We have $3,000 in the budget for new Parkway trees. That should get us approximately 30 trees. They will be spread throughout the community based on need as determined by Public Works. So I'm sure, it's probably, I mean, we usually do that fall.
Right, yeah, we're not waiting until about last, or we're going to be planting in November this year. And they will be, I want to say six, seven different species that you guys have already, we've already determined.
A couple years ago?
Yes, a couple, well, probably two years, three years ago.
All right. Crack ceiling requests for proposals have been mailed out to potential contractors in the south suburbs. $20,000 is budgeted for this project. Staffing needs updates. Committee agreed with the superintendent that up to 600 additional part-time hours can be used this fall. The money's there in the budget, so one or two part-timers will be, look to be brought in for, to help out with leaf collection. That's usually one of the biggest burden on the department this time of year. Penfield Street water main update. Bob, you want to give us an update on that?
It's a nightmare. The good news is we're receiving reports that EPA lowered the interest rate on the water main and on the sewer to 1.75%.
Better than it would be to be thought, yeah.
So it's good that we get these projects approved by the EPA by July 1st of 2017, and that's our goal. The bad news is the EPA, since they're so overburdened with all these projects, they find a little reason to kick one back. And one of the excuses they had is they had 724 Penfield on our operating permit and 625 Dixie on the application for the construction of the main. And they kicked the whole thing back because the two addresses didn't match. Which is crazy, but that's how it works. So we had to submit the refile, resubmit. I'm sure we went back to the bottom of the pile, but that's the game we play in doing these things approved. The engineer is still saying that we'll probably bid this thing after Labor Day. And we're looking at late winter, early spring construction season. Which kind of still needs our timeline. But again, I think we had another water main break on Elm Street, didn't we? Yes. Last week? So every time something happens out there, it's another, by grand, we didn't have to spend it. So we're at their mercy. We've done everything we can do at this point.
Safe routes to school update. Project's basically complete, just waiting on the beacons, right?
That's correct.
Flashing beacons?
Yes, we had some concerns regarding the, no, I think you're going to correct me. Okay, regarding the stoppage line for pedestrians. There's people saying, you know, you come up on that sign at 35, told them, there it is. Those signs shouldn't be bagged. And we had a discussion with the engineer and the contractor about bagging them. And IDOC regulations say any speed zone 35 or less, that's a valid sign. Doesn't matter if there's a flashing beacon or not. So unfortunately, we can't bag the signs. So when you're approaching Miller Street, make sure there's no one trying to cross the street. Give plenty of time for the people behind you to know you're going to have to stop. There's concerns that you might get rear-ended by a semi. Very legitimate concerns because those beacons aren't up yet. But IDOC will not let us do that. And we're hoping the beacons will be up soon.
Am I not correct that it doesn't even have to be posted? Bottom line is if you're approaching a pedestrian crosswalk under 35 miles an hour and there's a pedestrian there, you have to stop.
Yes, pedestrians do have the right of.
Whether they're signs or not.
You just have to make sure the guy behind you knows you're going to stop.
That's part of why I repeated it, summarized it, so that anybody who's watching can hear. All right, that concludes my report.
Economic Development Community Relations, trustee Basil.
Results of the meeting with the new owners at the Belmore Racetrack hits. The village president and several of the trustees attended the meeting. A meet and greet session with the new owners of the facility. It's going to be a really nice thing for the area. I think one of the things that really came out of it is that hotels. They really would like to see some hotels being built in the area. Because they're going to have 12 events over a 13-week period from May to September. They're redoing all the stalls out there, 1,100 permanent stalls for horses in 23 barns. So one of the things they asked for is if anyone knows carpenters. They're going to be looking for carpenters to do some work out there. And other workers also. I have the lady's name and phone number, Siri Dupont Hurley. And her cell number is 857-205-4946. Anyone that's interested in those things. We're going to have an RV park for people coming in. These are horses that are probably from 500,000 to a million dollar horses. The average income of the people coming into the area, probably $225,000 a year income. So it's, they're going to have seating there in the grandstands, almost 4,500 people. That can be in the grandstands. And state-of-the-art VIP section, which the inside is in immaculate shape still. You know, the outside does need a lot of work. In the mile track, there's going to be 10 show rings that you can watch on TVs inside or outside by the rings. She did say that, or they did say that there wouldn't be charge for admission unless there's a special day, like on a Sunday. There's sometimes there's a $5 or $10 charge. But most of that money, they'll donate to local charities. So they're not there to really make a lot of money off the, you know, the residents in Crete and Beecher. So they're going to have vendors inside, a lot of upscale vendors, probably saddles and things of that nature along with the horse stuff. They're looking, I think she said like 1,250 horses a week to be, to come out to the, to these shows. They have all those dates locked up already. So they're looking to open up next May? Anything else you want to add?
Just during the off-season or during the days when there's nothing going on, they hope they have Belmore used for other things, maybe concerts, maybe shows of other types, maybe circus.
Circus or big car shows or, it's just not going to be the horses.
So they're going to try and use the venue for other things as well. And no, I think you covered it quite well. You took better notes than I did.
I have to, I'm old.
I'm older.
Yeah. But yeah, they have, they have places in Florida, Arizona, New York, California. And this is the only one really in this area. So like, a lot of the people there were excited because horse people from like Kentucky and in the Midwest here, they have a place now that is pretty close, so.
They, they are also, we gave them Beechers pamphlets that we made up in the village hall along with our business card. And just simply say, we realize that, you know, you're in Crete hands, or the school county's hands. But we're your neighbor. If there's anything you need, by all means, contact us. They are looking for brochures like that because when these contestants or whatever you want to call them, their patrons come into the area, they're looking for, not only to go places in the area for food or whatever. They're looking for things to do during their off-time. So like the one thing that I'm going to email them tomorrow is their 4th of July brochure as a sample. A show that we do during, during the 4th of July. And of course, we told them about Princess Cafe and something, and try to brag about, you know, anything else that we can in Beecher. But we did give them some brochures already. And according to this woman, Siri, that's exactly what she's looking for. So if you have any ideas, we should give them in the van, you know, in the future or whatever. You know, if they all can put us know, we can something to add to them.
Does the village need to produce a higher quality brochure for this? Is that something the committee should work on?
Yeah, I tend to think so. In fact, even if there's a, we summarized what we had to offer. Maybe if there's a list of all the businesses in the town that maybe they would need, it was the thought that I had. But yeah, that is a thought that I did have, maybe on a quarterly paper or something like that. I don't know what the copy machines gave the world.
If I remember right, one of the dates, one of the shows was starting on July 5th. So a lot of those people will probably be in early for that, so. Not sure.
And they, for some reason, they inquired about our brochures, which I have to send them the information tomorrow. Which there's a rumor going around that they bought Belmore. I don't know if that's true or not.
That's not true.
Not true. Yeah, by the way, the conversation went that day and then it's...
Well, he said to me that they had, but I talked today that, yeah, they have not.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, again, there was another conversation.
No money's changed hands, let's put it that way. Nothing's been signed.
I mean, the only thing is basically is what we're telling you is what we heard, everything else is a rumor, so.
So bottom line, it's going to be good for the area, I'm sure. Illinois, I mean, Lincoln, Illinois, 394 Enterprise Zone update. The first organizational meeting was held last week. Administrator Barber is on the board of directors of the zone. The financing director from Sauk Village will be the zoning administrator until such time as a consultant is hired to run the daily operations of the zone. At this time, it appears that Cook County will be providing $50,000 grant to get the zone up and running. After the zone, after that, the zone should be generating some revenue to cover its operating costs. The board will be meeting monthly until the zone is up and running on its own. Gould Street Boardwalk update to be provided at the meeting.
I wish I had.
I think, I think we have no update.
The only thing is, is that the architect did come in and I, Bob wasn't here, so I said, tell him. And I told him the whole story of what we're looking for. And as of today, Bob inquired from them if we have any progress yet. He hasn't gotten back to me. I saw him in chamber, talked to him at the chamber meeting. And what they want to do is design something to bring those buildings up to grade, grade A compliance. So the boardwalk may actually have some percent of slope on it all the way down. But he doesn't know how that's going to look. So it's a work in progress. I don't, I do not have prints and I don't even have a proposal.
Does he have further questions? My name is Paul.
October 10th, it is a Monday and it's a holiday, it's Columbus Day. We need a motion to change that meeting to October 11th. Someone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
And it's a second. Any questions? What we're doing? So bottom line is October 10th, the original meeting is going to be October 11th. Roll call.
Aaron?
Yes.
Caprowski?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
And just a reminder, we have an intergovernmental meeting. And just a reminder, we have an intergovernmental meeting on August thirty-first, seven p.m. We are having it here this time. We're going to try and see if we can have it there. And, is there any other old business coming through?
I don't know if it's old or new, but I had a resident ask me about the training horns going through and wondering what the update, if there's been anything.
Well, I can also tell you that when I went down to Byron Harden's studio, I stopped and had a lot of rant at the line, considering, you know, two trains went by, and I wanted to shoot every one of them as they went by. Unfortunately, everything is done, it's ready to go, but we're still looking for the hundred thousand dollars to get it done. We did mention it to the Will County Governmental League, who thought, you know, there's a possibility that you could get some help with that. So we'll see as time goes on. Whenever we get the money, it's on the table. Hopefully, we can get it done. I'd like to get it done sooner or later, but unfortunately, other priorities is, you know.
It's possible. It's, we, you could do the project. It's, it's, it's not financially feasible right now.
Until the state decides what they're doing after this, probably after the November election, then maybe we'd be more comfortable with maybe taking it, you know, from the service or something. I don't know. You know, it's just, it's all up in the air right now.
Yeah, I know, but it's been a hot button for, for a while.
Yeah, I, and I would agree. I would hope to get it done sometime.
Is this all through crosses?
We all across these even, uh, three, four.
Either way.
Even way. We felt that either way would have to be done to make this be effective. Five?
There's three in town.
Yeah, it would be five. We've got Church Road, we've got Church.
Church.
Indiana, Penn Field, Popes Church, and we're going to five. And at that cost, I think we basically will, not closing, not closing, I mean, that's still up in the air. We have decided that we could close it, and get parking area inside, we have technically decided that, so the price.
Okay. Under the one? Oh. Yeah. So the one, the one thing, it's feasible. I mean, it's possible.
That's a joke.
Yeah.
In case your report was a joke.
You know, I didn't even get it.
Okay.
And there's a good chance that I'm going to listen to this later and be like, I still don't get it, but what this is, so.
It's a joke. It's an inside joke.
Yes.
Then that's perfectly fine.
I want to stress, it's, it's possible, Scott. We have a few more impediments. The other towns that have this, because of the speed of the track, the speed of the trains that come through Beecher, they come through at a higher speed than the other spots. I think this track is rated for fifty-eight miles an hour or something, where a lot of these quiet zones are in thirty-five or less. So we have to do a little more to get our quiet zone, you know, as far as protecting the cross. But it's not impossible. And the study is still on the website. Is it not? Did you take it down?
It's currently on the website.
You took it down?
Okay.
Probably in the next President's Call or whatever, we'll get an update on one of the things as well. Any other new business? Any new business? I, well, speaking of noise, speaking of noise, the community chimes are down. We didn't know that until a resident said that the chimes aren't working. Well, they were working after the fourth, because we play patriotic music for the parade, and then I will reprogram it back to its normal standard. It was working. When I went down there, night of the chamber meeting, and the computer is working fine, the amplifier was not, something was wrong between the computer and where drivers are at on top of the building. So we started with the amplifier. We believe the amplifier has a problem. We're going to send that in to the company. When they bring that amplifier back and say that it's working fine, or we can divide it when we hook it up, we don't know what's going on up on the roof yet with the drivers. But we're going to start with the easy thing and work our way to the hard part. So the chimes are down. I don't know how long they're going to be down. The fire department's happy, they don't have to listen to them, but it's going to be down for, for a while. Hopefully, by fall, we'll get them up and running. That's all I have. Any other new business? Motion, Jerry?
So, second.
Any questions to that one? Go call.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Trailing?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.